All right, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, it is 7:00 PM. This is Thursday, June 13th. This is the council meeting for Albernette, Iowa. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Now, I don't see our deputy sheriff, so we'll go ahead and continue as we normally do. Here in the city of Albernette, we do start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have our flag here. I'll ask everybody to stand. I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask you to go ahead and stand and face the flag. "I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. All right, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll calls so we can establish a quorum for this evening.
Dr. Minton.
Present.
Dr. Shawn.
Present.
Dr. Chong.
Present.
Dr. Henderson.
Present.
The record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business this evening. All right, you have the agenda in front of you. Are there any changes to the agenda, clerk?
I need to add one additional resolution. It'll come in the agenda packet after I am 11:00 E.
After 11:00 E, go ahead.
Our bond facilitating company is Bankers Trust currently, and they're being bought out by UMB. And we just took the resolution to change it from Bankers Trust over to UMB, and they provided the language, so it's just a formality.
Okay, let the record reflect that. Change, and I'd ask for approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Shawn.
Second.
Seconded by Minton. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Number five is the sheriff's report. We don't have the deputy here, probably tied up on something. So we'll go ahead and move past that item, and we'll recognize the deputy when he arrives. Number six is the mayor's report. I don't have a lot of things this evening. I do want to go ahead and catch up with council and the folks present on a couple of items that we've been working on over the last month. On the top, as far as importance, is newest abatement. We've been holding hearings, I know the council's aware of that, but for the folks in the audience or maybe watching on YouTube, we have been holding our newest abatements hearings as well as doing our notifications around town. I think it's gone extremely well for the amount of information that we've put out to the folks as far as abating anything to be in compliance with our city ordinances. The vast majority have taken care of those. There were not a lot to begin with, but those have gone extremely well. We have held one round of hearings for the folks that have requested those, and those have gone also extremely well. I want to thank the clerk and the city works department for being on top of that and for making everyone aware within the city staff of what was going on and keeping us appraised at that. So also want to thank the council for attending those hearings. Keep in mind that a lot of the time and effort that we do that, especially at the council level, is all volunteered. Some of the official meetings, of course, are on the record, but much of that is volunteered of our time, and we're happy to do it for the beautification of the city. I will also say that the folks within town have been very good to work with, and I don't think that we've had any issue at all with the abatement. I'll also recognize the city clerk and the public works director for any further comment on that.
I think it's going well, too. There's only been a couple of no response, and they're relatively minor problems. We'll deal with them as they come, but yeah, it really did go over well. I agree. Better than I expected.
Clerk, go ahead.
Just a reminder, we have a hearing scheduled for Tuesday, this coming Tuesday the 18th at 5:30.
Tuesday, the 18th will be the next set of hearings. And is that going to be all? When will that complete the cycle?
It should yet for this round yet.
All right, very good. I don't think that I have anything else on my report for that unless there's something I'm missing, you know? Okay, very good. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, which is the... Oh, wait a minute. I do want to add one more thing. Tomorrow starts our...
Garage sales.
Garage sales, yes, very good. Starts our garage sales, and we also have those through Saturday. And if you want your breakfast burrito, I believe those start at 7:00 at the Historical Society from 7:00 to 10:00, and then I believe from 10:00 to 1:00, you can get your walking taco or your sandwich. So make sure that you get a chance to stop down there. I did want to mention that as well. Okay, item number seven, council reports. We'll start with Councilman Minton.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, very good. That's easy. By Dan's counsel.
I got a couple of things. One, I'd like to command our maintenance, your building maintenance crew for their cleanup that they get on their building. If you haven't been up there to take a look at it, you should. You can walk in there now and find things. And sadly, get a good job cleaning it up, and they had it dropped to the floor and backed it down, so it makes it look better.
They could probably find everything before, but now everybody can't.
That's a bad thing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, because they've got everything all laid out. Looks nice.
Thank you. I know you guys have been knocking down a lot of brush and doing a lot of work there, too, as well, so good work.
And the other thing I have is a plea for the dog walkers. Would they please, when they go to walk their dog, take along a baggie or a little paper? Think of your friends and neighbors.
Yeah, because if they're not picking it up, somebody else has to, it seems like, yeah.
Somebody else has to. And it's kind of embarrassing to have to walk around to get in the boost.
Yeah, that's true. I know that Danielle, you put out a notification on our Facebook page some time back, but it's always good to put out a reminder out there that pick up after yourself, so.
We have a lot of plates.
For some reason, it's gotten worse, I believe. Whatever, however you want to... Maybe somebody's beating their dogs next month.
Something in the water. Would you make a note that when we send out the next city newsletter, we'll drop an article in there on that as well? All right, very good. Anything else?
No, we're done. Anything else?
Councilman Trump.
Good.
All right, so that'll complete the council reports at this time. We'll move on to citizen comments. Also, in the city of Albernette, we allow for citizen comments. There are two types. The first one are the agenda comments. So if there's an item on the agenda that you wish to comment about, the agenda comments at this time, it's a five-minute limit. If you wish to make a comment on our item on the agenda, this is the time and place to do so. Well, I just ask that you state your payment address clearly for the record, and you can go ahead and address the council at this time. Any agenda item comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the non-agenda item comments. The same applies, you state your name and address clearly for the record. You have up to five minutes to address the council. Seeing none also, then we'll go ahead and move on to item number nine, which is the written reports. The first report is from the fire chief, who was present, but I believe he got pulled away for fired business, so I'll refer back to the city maintenance to see if he has his report for him.
Yeah, he will only be gone a moment. Maybe we move to the other two and then talk about that.
Oh, okay, it sounds like he's going to be back then. Then we'll go ahead and skip over item 9A, and we'll move on to item 9B, which is the public works director's report.
The only thing to add is the work on the storm wire and culverts on North Street that we've been working on here this week. We've more or less got it done today as far as water flow goes. We need to do a little cleanup, a little work to get ready to seed, throw some grass seed on that, and we'll probably put straw mat on it to try and hold it, hold some moisture, and then that project will be complete. And other than that, I think everything in the report pretty much tells the story. Any questions?
I noted in the report that you had an exception there on North Third. When will that be complete yet?
Oh, when they're back in this area, which you said would be late July, early August. I'm glad they didn't try and seal coat it. It was super spongy even after they poured it out, so that is a good thing, so even though we have to wait for it.
Before we go back to the fire department, we'll go ahead and complete the city clerk's report. I've recognized Danielle this time.
I don't have anything specific to add, just wanted to know that I'll be out for those upcoming train. One is just a one-day tip workshop. The other is the clerk institute up in Ames, and that's a weekend.
And when is that?
In July.
Okay, all right.
The second, third week of July.
Well, I'm sure our public works director will be happy to take that on. Is that over? Oh, that will be over? No, it won't. Yes, it will. Will that be over, council?
July 15.
Yes.
15, that will be, okay.
Yes.
What will we do?
Well, I'm going to be gone the week of July 4th for vacation, so I'll be well-rested. Great.
We'll struggle through. You can watch the video and see how badly we do without you, so. All right, very good. All right, then we'll go ahead and move back to item 9A for the fire department's report. Again, it's also in your council packet, and we've had an opportunity to review that. And any further comments on that, chief?
I'd like to purchase more fire gloves.
Okay.
I just got them picked up tonight, but approximately 24 gloves for $5,258 basis of.
What was the total if we're going to end up doing an amendment?
$1,558.8.
And that's for gloves?
Yep.
Is that the only item? $1,558.
Yeah, for $64.95.
Okay. I take it you just got that? That's why it's added at this time?
Yes.
All right. Very good. And this is getting near year-end. You have the budget for it?
And probably build some extra.
Okay.
There's a lot of times I work and get it. Then I do have the bill for the bunker here, I just haven't got that before they're pumped and built.
Okay, Danielle, probably take that, and also have to...
We're talking about bill.
I'll let you assess that, Danielle, and would you... You made a note of the other for the gloves?
Yes.
I'll let you figure that when we get to item 10 or 10B.
Does this need to come out of this year's funds? Is this something approved?
This should have been budgeted for this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got money, and I checked on that today.
Okay, okay.
So the other is the invoice that's going to be encumbered on the 19, and then the gloves are a new purchase, needs requesting, okay?
They should, oh, by 20.
Okay, you want to purchase that in 20?
Yeah, I'll probably order a week or so.
Want a motion for the gloves? Is that announced?
I don't think so, because I think about a 10-minute invoice, it'll be about...
$15.58. All right, okay. $15.58 is fine. All right, very good. Anything else to add to your report?
I was going to tell the guy the ACs froze up at the fire station.
Oh.
It's all blocked by cell inside.
Okay.
136, the tank control for the baller motor, not broke off.
Okay.
And we need to add a couple.
And I've got new tires for 139. We just got to get it out there and put them on, so.
And then the 23rd, 24th of this month, we're going to get some cars. We'll probably put them up there and cut them up, probably burn themself some of the black smoke.
That's training or something?
Yeah.
What would be that?
Upset. And hope to pick up cars.
What is it during the week or on the weekend?
It's a Sunday, Monday.
Sunday, Monday.
It's going to be Sunday night, Monday night.
Stayed this month?
Yeah, this month.
Yeah, you're good. Good.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
Are all the maintenance lined up now, or are the trucks?
Yeah, 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 we're going to start servicing. When 139 gets the tires, we'll service it, and then we'll look at the next one and get it serviced, and just keep going until we're down to 135, so.
I don't know if you want to add, do you want oil to 136 or my owner?
Okay. It's on the ed mark. We'll maybe move it in next after 139 then.
Do we have to point oil?
Yeah, right. Yep, no, I got you. No problem. Do 136 next.
Anything else, chief? Council, any questions for either the fire chief, public works director, or city clerk in reference to the written reports? Okay, hearing none, then we'll go ahead and move on to item number 10, which is approval of the consent agenda. Clerk, what amendments would we have on this before calling for motion?
We have a couple of bills added to the...
That's those, correct.
Yep, so one is the Iowa Municipal Professional Institute is the invoice for my clerk school of the days. It's $900 total.
Good.
That's listed in there, and that's paid to the Iowa League of Cities to facilitate that. There's an invoice for MSA that we just received today, and... I'm sorry, there are two invoices for MSA. One is for $1,722.50, and that is for the culvert replacement project on Roosevelt. And there is an invoice from MSA as well for $5,880, and that is for the portion of the fire station design. That's 30% completion of their contracted amount at $18,600. So again, invoice amount is $5,880 to MSA, and then the...
Would you code that one accordingly to the fire station product, please, or project, please?
Yes.
Go ahead.
And then the invoice, the fire chief just provided from Hyman Fire coming for the bunker here, for $11,440.
That's budgeted for me. All right, very good. Okay, any others?
No, that's all.
Council, any questions about the additions? Are any questions on the consent?
Of course, secondly, sir.
The first MSA invoice?
No, for the park school.
Oh, the park school? It was...
$900 even to the league of cities.
So there were four.
Two MSA invoices, league of cities, and Hyman Fire.
All right, whenever you're ready, Councilman Shawn.
Can I make a note on those things in the packet? I have it noted on here, but two of the invoices were approved in the last meeting, but they didn't get entered, so they're on this report. They're notated on there, but I just wanted to mention it.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Ready?
I'm ready.
All right, then we'll go ahead and seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as Moved by Shawn. Seconded by Trump. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and move on to item number 11, the new business. Item 11A is Nancy Fuller, who is here to talk about her event information request and a possible motion. We'll go ahead and recognize you. Can you bring it up, Nancy?
Name, address, all that stuff?
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
You're a regular.
As you notice, I have nothing in my hands today. I am so unprepared. I forgot about our meeting, and I just tear the roof off today. So first thing I want to do is let you know that Albernette Children's Benefit Days is not going to be out at the Baldiron. It's going to be back uptown where it has always been. So we ask your permission to do that how we normally do that, and we'll get you all the stuff that we have to normally get you, and go from there.
Okay.
That's it for that part.
But you'll do your normal application?
Yes, yes, everything. Just wanted to let you know.
Very good, thank you.
The car show, June 22nd, is looking really good. The fire department is cooking lunch, the Historical Society is cooking, or is doing a pancake breakfast, and we still have no idea how many cars are going to show up. We're going to do the best we can to keep our road closed how it was, but we still might end up going to the church.
Okay.
Just wanted to let you know that part.
No issue there, guy, for support on that. All right, very good, thank you.
And I just recently found out that there is a benefit run coming through town Saturday. We are their first stop, which is a good thing because they don't stay long. So I would like permission to not block the streets, but take up the parking on in front of our place. I want to say it's 11 o'clock to 12 o'clock, but it might be 10:30 to 11:30. It's right around there, so they can all come in in an organized manner and park. And I'm going to talk to the Historical Society and tell them to put their lunch signs out in the street so they can see them. So just permission to block off parking for an hour.
That can probably done at the pleasure of the council, and what do you think?
Yeah, fine.
I'll put my signs out.
Basically what you did last weekend?
Yes.
On that panel, as you said, your calls out.
Yes.
Fair enough.
It works great. It really works great.
Good, 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 good.
Let's see, that was three things, right? I'm done. Anything for me?
I will have a question after we deal with that. Go ahead.
I have a question. Benefit Days, there was talk of tractor pull last year.
There will not be a tractor pull this year.
Before I call for a motion for your special consideration for Saturday, I do have questions. All right. Benefit Days, you have, I can't think of the name, they come from up north there, but they do your big Carolina fries, or whatever.
Coolist.
Coolist. We don't, we do not know if they're going to be doing it.
No motion.
But...
No motion.
I can bring you something from there. They still have their barbecues on Saturdays.
I just wondered if they were coming again.
We're not sure if they are or not, because since they have purchased that place, they've kind of backed out of a lot of stuff they were doing.
Yes.
We are hoping they still are.
Okay.
If not, there's talk of doing barbecues and cook-off, so you'll still be...
I kind of like those, you know?
What you can still get is just sauce and pork or something for you.
All right. All right. Entertained a motion to allow you to block off your street for Saturday's run.
Parking.
Parking.
So...
I think there was a move by Josh there, and seconded by Shawn. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, aye, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries, no problem, thank you.
Thanks.
Do you want to add your cones, Nancy?
Do you have two extra cones?
Oh, yes.
Although it would be awesome. I always move them around that morning up, trying to make it so nobody parks there.
Still be thinking about those...
I will.
Fries. Pull it off.
They're really good, aren't they?
They are. That's why I come down, I come down there each time, get those. I'm not sure how good they are for you.
It doesn't matter. They're cooked on that offer.
They're somewhere right there. They're fat-free. All the fat in them is free.
That's right.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to 11B. All right, pardon, okay, this is a separate item, right? This is 11B, or do we need to go over there?
That's worth that airbags.
Okay, so we need to cover this separately.
Yeah.
All right, I think this was like three or four airbags or something. I'll let you explain it.
Three airbags. We have twelve total. We bought seven, so three more would almost fill 135. There's four spots on 135, and then an extra for buying the last two. Then I want a spare bottle for 134. We have an extra hole. We'll fill that up, and then we'll need three masks for airbags.
Estimate or the cost if you have it, and then the timeline for purchase on there. Oh, you do have it in there? Okay, all right. I didn't see it when I flipped through, so never mind. It's in your backlog.
This will be next year, right?
This will be, yeah, it'll take a couple months to get done.
Thank you, sorry.
Six weeks, I can't.
Yeah, that's my way to tell now, but that's whatever.
Sorry about that. It is in your packet, so there we go.
And then the original quote is in there for just one each, that's a lot.
Okay, so the total cost of $15,199.41, and that's for FY '20, I take it, budget year. But you're seeking approval this evening?
Yeah, if I can order, I can take a look.
I have one quick. What is it? Will you explain to me what I've ever been?
It's the airbags you put on to go in the house.
Case of smoke or whatever.
Yep, and then the three masks are what it all looks up to.
Right. Now I know, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion on that before we seek approval? All right, I'd seek a motion to approve it, and that'll be by roll calls as well because of the cost. Motion then to approve for $15,199.41 for the purchase of airbags. Moved by Trump, seconded by Henderson. Any other discussion? Would you call the roll on that, please?
Dr. Henderson.
Aye.
Dr. Shawn.
Aye.
Dr. Shawn.
Aye.
All right.
Motion carries, there you go, thank you. All right, we'll move on to 11C, the city maintenance. This is a vehicle purchase request and possible motion, but I'm here for the explanation on this, Colby Works Director, go ahead.
I just brought it up last month, having that extra set of wheels, it seems like. It's not just because we have two part-time guys here for this short period of time, but I feel terrible asking sometimes our part-time worker to jump in his own vehicle and build from point A to point B because the dump truck is in use or can't be moved easily in the city truck. And I don't mind using my vehicle either occasionally, but it's hard to even be reversed for because when you're driving a half mile across town and whatever. So I thought another vehicle might be wise. We talked about a UTV at budget time, totally wasn't even thinking about the ordinance not allowing it. The reason I thought that was a good item would be to be able to go off-road in the park fire station situation, et cetera, in the lagoons. And so I just last month brought up the idea of, you know, some kind of other vehicle. Are you in favor? What would be a spending limit, et cetera? In the meantime, I ran across this rig on Craigslist. It kind of is the match between the UTV and an on-road vehicle. It's an 89, it's got 128,000 miles on it. So I talked to the guy, he claims to have absolutely no rust. It was a Florida vehicle all its life before it came here, and he never drove it in the winter. It has the structure for a soft top, but the soft top is no good. Soft tops are 200 bucks, so it could be driven in the winter. Easy in and out, off-road capable. It's got a six-cylinder, inline six-cylinder. The Jeep has had in their Jeeps for 25 years, that's almost indestructible. He told me 5,000 would buy it. Just throwing it out there, trying to come up with the appropriate vehicle for what we're trying to do. That Jeep is rind aligned on the inside, so if it's outside when it rains, it's not going to hurt a thing. There's nothing fancy about it. It's actually a manual transmission. Steve, I didn't even get a chance to talk with you because I just saw this the other day, but you mentioned accessing people on the trail, on the bike path. I see no reason why it couldn't be made available to the fire department, too, if they got into a scenario like that where they could figure out a way where they could get in it and the first two people at least could get there until they figured out how they were going to get to them from another direction. Totally hitting you off without, you know, any forewarning on this, and I have absolutely no expectations, but it's out there right now. You know how Craigslist works. Next week it's gone, so. Beyond that, if that is something you don't like, then I would like to have a little discussion on whether another vehicle is possible or not. And if so, what the dollar amount should be and et cetera, and what you think maybe, what type of vehicle this should be. Yeah, yeah, not especially now that we clean the. No, it wasn't. Should've known, should've known. Yeah, no. Yeah, no, we can keep it undercover. Absolutely. And for that matter, you know, it's a long ways down the road, but when the fire station is built, it literally could live in the fire station. So that way the firemen always have, could get their hands on it during the off-hours. And I would still obviously be able to access it for daily use, you know, as well. And I'm not saying that's what you need, Steve. I'm just saying that if it's a city-owned vehicle and you get into a scenario like that, it would get you to some of those places, so.
How often in situations where somebody might have to drive their own vehicle?
Daily. Daily.
And you're driving a mile or two or?
Well, yeah, across town. Just across town. That's why there's, I expect very little money to be spent here. I mean, it's, it's not, you know, it's not a need that is, you know, we don't need a brand-new vehicle. We don't need another four-wheel-drive big pickup. We got plenty of towing power. We have plenty of hauling power. We have, it's basic transportation for the most part. You know, it could be a, could be a little four-cylinder economy car, honestly, except it'd be nicer to have, if we had that vehicle, I'd take that backseat out and throw it away, and then that entire back, you could throw shovels in, throw buckets in, whatever, you know. That vehicle could be power-washed out if we threw a bunch of muddy stuff in it, so.
Where's it at right now?
To be and I may call in the morning. He may say he sold it last night. I don't know. He told me if it was still on Craigslist, he still got it. And I looked it up right before you all got here, and it was still there, so.
Would you think about a little pickup?
I, that would probably be my other choice. If I had to just stumble across this, yes.
I just think a pickup would be a little more practical. That doesn't really have much to bet.
No. No.
It's probably a little more useful for the fire department in their scenario.
Totally get you. The pickups, the problem is, for 5,000 bucks, you're going to get a rusted-out piece of crap for a pickup. It boils down to how much money you're going to spend. I just see a rust-free vehicle for 5,000 bucks that even if the motor went bad, you're going to spend 1,500 to 2,000 to put a motor in it, and you're back on the road again, so.
Well, for 5,000 bucks, it'd be 5,000 bucks if it's a golf cart anymore. It's a lot better than golf cart.
Well, that's just it. Only the used ones that I was looking at at budget time were eight.
And those don't, I mean, obviously, what you and the fire department end up getting into some of those last year.
And I haven't seen it. I may get there, and he may be lying through his teeth. I don't know, you know. And it was not worth the drive, means we hadn't talked about it, so. And I know I'm hitting you out of the blue if you want to just say, let's talk next month and decide more. You're not hurting my feelings at all.
Comments? Counsel comments?
I'm not against it. You know, you made a lot of good points. You're not going to get a pickup for that price. If you do, it's going to be a piece of junk. Is this practical? I don't know. Doesn't fit what you need. You're the one that needs to know, not me.
I think 80% of the time, it's just going to be basic transportation across town. That's what it boils down to, you know. If, if it's, if we put a soft top on it and it can be closed up, it could actually be driven to the lab in Waterloo and get twice as good a gas mileage as our three-quarter ton pickup gets.
Can you get a hardtop for it?
Oh, I'm sure.
Soft top in the winter, you freeze it down.
Well, yeah, yeah. And the winter is when we need it the least because there's less things going on about, around town.
And this is just me and my head spinning. You could put a snowblow on that.
Yeah.
If Steve needed to get down the trail in the winter.
Yeah.
Yes, that's a big if, but you could do that.
Yep, that's absolutely right. That is true. I know we're talking about that part. Right now, we use it every single day. Yeah, I mean, pretty constantly. In the winter, like I said, it would sit quite a bit because in the winter, we're going to be in the two plow vehicles plowing snow for the most part, and we don't have the construction-type operation going on in the winter than we do in the summer and the fall, so. Right, exactly. So it would see hard use probably from April until October, almost daily, if not daily. And then after, for the rest of the months, yeah, it would, it would be limited use, you know, when, when one is off going after parts or doing something else, at least we've still got something to run around without starting our diesel dump truck just to drive across town. Yeah, we could do that, too. We could do that. Well, my, that little Enduro motorcycle of mine is for sale if the city would like to buy, and then I was just. Yes, yes, exactly.
Well, I would say this. Obviously, it's up to the council if they want to make a motion for approval. If it does go to that, I would approve or suggest you approve funding, not the purchase of the vehicle, because you haven't even looked at it.
Yeah, right.
Secondly, I don't like mid-year, let alone late-year approvals of especially high-dollar items. And this is not a replacement vehicle. This is in addition to the fleet. Although the council can do it, we're not at full council, so there's obviously a council person that wouldn't even be present to have an say on whether or not they want to expand the fleet. Additionally, normally, anything that would be considered in addition like this to the fleet because it becomes a city asset, and it's not just the purchase of a vehicle, it's the maintenance of the tires and the whether you call it insurance or not, because of self-insurance or whatever you want, we still are an insurable entity. And then the same thing with the people that drive it and have to maintain it in oil and gas and everything else. So it's not just a one-time expense. It's an ongoing expense, so another reason why we'd probably want to be at full council before that decision was made.
No problem.
Additionally, these types of requests normally come in at budget year time, where we say we're going to make a purchase based upon this, and here's, to me, this is more of a durable item that wears out after this many years, and this is when we purchase it, this is when we replace it, and so on, so. However, that being said, that doesn't mean it can't be purchased when we recognize the need for an additional vehicle. If we went more of the UTV or smaller type, I think we, at one time, we talked about the nicer Gator-type vehicle that could be enclosed, that could do fire support, trail support, as well as get you around the city, as well as all-weather usage. To me, I'd rather pay more, have new, and have better for what we wanted than, and have it approved in a normal cycle than purchase something that has, it's not that old, but it's older. Do that, that we would have a larger maintenance cycle on. However, I tend to agree, if we have the need, which it sounds like we do now, right now, with the daily use of employees and things like that, then I can see that side of it as well. It may not be worth even, you know, just going and looking at it and determining what it is. The price is not outrageous, what it means for a vehicle. And like you say, I might get over there and look at it and say, this is not what I thought it was, too. Those are my comments.
My comment again. What about like a vehicle loan for so many months a year? It's really like marrying, a lot of people are marrying a vehicle loan. It's as cheap as they're going to buy a vehicle.
What do you mean?
I mean, they can turn in mileage right now and get reversed.
Like Guy said, it's a mile. It's harder on his vehicle probably than what it's worth. I'm saying like just a monthly, you get X amount of dollars a month driving your vehicle all around town, or to run the Cedar Rapids, get parts sorted, whatever.
If you use a mileage, there's a federal standard on that. That's easy to calculate. It keeps us out of the insurance business. It keeps us out of the maintenance business. Maybe we could think about that, too. I know I live with that. But that doesn't give you the ability to haul plywood or equipment.
The tough part about that is we are asking to start up a big dump truck within two years, so it gives them, I think, something. Especially if you're going to how often you're on the water.
Yeah, in spring and fall, you know, three or four times a month when we're doing drawdown, and then it's always at least one trip a month minimum to take water samples, and a lot of months it's two, but when we're drawing down at the lagoons, it's four.
And which vehicle do you typically take up there?
The three-quarter ton pickup, which is a 13-mile-a-gallon rig on its best day.
You have a lot of the mail samples on the water?
They can't, we can't get, by the time I take the sample, I've got two choices. I can either drive a sample to Waterloo, or I can drive it all the way to Cedar Rapids and then pay next-day rates on FedEx to get it to Waterloo. So to me, it's a wash. If I drive it to Waterloo, then I know they get it, because I've tried and tried to mail through the post office, and they tell me they won't guarantee next day, but they tell me it should get there next day, and then the bacteria samples are no good if they don't get there next day. So then you're taking another sample and another bottle, and so. And the lagoon samples are on ice in there, and that's a matter of hours. They have to be there within X number of hours, too.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council here?
It's too long. Well, you go by that for yourself, because it is pretty cool.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought, too.
Okay, my homework to you.
Do you want to put on these? You want, do you want to just wait until budget time next year? I mean, this isn't going to last forever. I could go look at it tomorrow, and we may sell it a week from now, because we can't make that quick of a, of a decision. So this, this one's gone. Don't worry about that. Don't worry about that, but.
I would still like to see it. And maybe we can budget for it and get something decent.
We'll get by. It's fine. It's fine. I just lately, it's come to the, come to a head because of how much we are, I hate seeing Brett. He's working part-time. You know, and I just hate him, seeing him jump in his pickup and running across town and, and stuff. It just doesn't seem right to me, you know, that he should have to do that because I'm off with the, with the city pickup, and the dump truck is hooked to the trailer because we've got the skid loader on it, so he jumps in his own truck. That, that's the only reason that I brought this up at this point, so. No worries.
Well, what if we had to start collectively, all of us, to get a complete management plan within the next 90 days and come back with something for the October council meeting? Is that reasonable? That would at least have us something ready for budget planning by the end of the year. Yeah, we typically, I don't want to get into other places where people work, but we typically start around October, so we're ready by the end of the year. Okay, so we'll table this. Also, that'll give us an opportunity to have Councilman Sarason also involved in the decision-making process. We'll do a 90-day, over the next 90 days, we'll do a review for a fleet, entire comprehensive fleet management preview and have a recommendation for the fall budget cycle, including a possible expansion or replacement of vehicles for the fleet. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to 11D, which is a resolution setting employee wages in possible motion. I'll go ahead and recognize the clerk for this. There is an item within the, within your packet here, but any comments on this?
This is just the annual resolution to step the wages. I put the earnings scale in the packet as well as where the workers are currently sitting as far as their hourly rate and their entire rate. So it's an informative shape to review.
Okay, so the maintenance workers, we just set those wages, what, within the last 60 days or something like that, so those are going to be status quo. So then the additional ones with the Public Works Director and City Clerk, your comments that I have on that, I do have a lot of these are tied to their reviews. This is not public record. These are internal documents, but I did bring them for this evening. These are for council only. You're welcome to look at these, but just as a reminder, the reviews for city employees are done. The annual review is done on June 1st or through the month of June. Danielle's is, she's up, or done her one year in July, but I went ahead and did an annual review for her. And then the guy's has done his last semi-annual and his annual is in here, if you want to take a look at these. They're available for you to review if you want to, but the original, originally for the city clerk, she could be eligible after coming off her one year if you want to do something different other than status quo carryover on this resolution for her current wage. The last, your last step increase was when?
The review was done when Danielle was hired. That all got done right in July.
So a year ago?
Yeah.
All right, so while you're thinking about if you want to do increases for next year, we'll go ahead and recognize the Lincoln County Deputy at this time for the sheriff's report, then we'll come back to this.
Thank you. I had a resident by the side. Looks like required 43, we put in 78.6 and 28 calls service.
Counselors, any questions for our deputies this evening on the hours or the calls for service?
With the weather warming up, you seeing any activity as far as more mischief, break-ins, that sort of stuff?
Well, not so much in Albert Net, but throughout the county, I've seen a couple more burglaries. There's been a lot more accidents than I've seen here throughout the county.
Wonder we see it this school, but a little bit, sitting central or running radar and everything, so we certainly appreciate it. We always appreciate you doing additional hours in Albert Net, so I'm glad to see so much of this stuff. Code Frank and no one getting arrested, so. We like it quiet here.
We like it quiet, too. Follow those paperwork.
Any other questions? Very good. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for hearing me.
Stay safe. Okay, we'll go ahead then and continue on with the item where we were on the agenda. Pleasure of the council then on what we want to do with Resolution 06201901 and reference to wages for next year. Can I get a clarification on how this nine step works? Just in terms of, is it, is it on view, is it on here as a service, like a seven late? So next year, for example, who is, is this guy, is he not grade 10 step two? Does he go to grade 10 step three? Or real bad? I mean, just some clarification of what the grade is. Usually, based upon the reviews, if they're in good standing with the city, or based upon the the pleasure of the council, it's the, those steps are set up on a percentage that is consistent with either cost of living or a step increase. And then the council decides on an annual basis whether or not they're going to receive an increase, or they can also deviate from the step process and give a different percentage or a different increase if they wish to do so. So it really just depends. And you could go status quo, or status quo across the board, and then at a later time, you could also do a step increase. Normally, they're done either in July or the January one, you know, in consistent with the increases, or I mean, the annual reviews, or semi-annual, either one. I would recommend that the maintenance worker salaries stay consistent with what they are. since they were just set up. That was two, a meeting or two meetings ago. How was that set? I don't even know if I was here for that one.
Grade 6 step 1. That's where we had taken charge on to.
Thank you. I just was looking for it. I couldn't see it. I found it now. Thank you for that. I see now. That makes sense. I just couldn't, I was looking under the box step. So our job right now is to see if we're going to move the folks over those steps.
Well, you can do anything you want with their salary. Like I said, only even with the maintenance, they were just brought in. They don't even have a year on, so I would suggest that they.
After observation of Brett's work and his capabilities, I feel willing to give him a step increase.
Is he going to be a long-term employer? Is he still seasonal or how is he?
No, he would be the full year, part-time, but year-round. And I keep telling him that there will be times a year where there won't be that many hours and he keeps telling me that that's fine, so.
I guess what I'm trying to say is I've seen him and he can do everything. I mean, he's a good equipment operator. And if that has anything to keep him here, I think we should look into that.
Okay, so there's a recommendation to move Brett from steps, from grade 6 step 1 to grade 6 step 2. Seven weeks.
Yeah, let's let him get a little time under his belt.
I don't disagree to the other job. We're talking about seven weeks, six weeks. That's a.
Most places have.
That's a 50 cent raise after six weeks. That's a, how do we follow that up?
Three, six months, yeah.
I don't disagree that he's doing an awesome job. And I would be more curious of that, but that's tough, I think, for.
Well. Well, can we, do we agree on, Mr. Lux has said it's going to stay at 1510?
Yes.
And I'd be in favor of, you know, if you, any of the sort of training that guys have to go through to do some of those things, they'd absolutely agree with that. It's a certification that I can definitely get after six weeks, I think that's.
If you want to revisit it in January after his first full review, too, that would be appropriate because then we'll know whether he's sticking it out during those winter months when he's not getting quite as many hours, too.
Do you have a recommendation that you already want to leave?
I think you're doing the right thing. Yeah, I mean.
I'm talking for Brett now.
Yeah, for Brett. Leave him where he's at, but.
Yeah, that's, that was just what I was going at. I was trying to think his value to us.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. I think if you revisited this in January, that would be appropriate to him.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, just good with that if we review it again in January and I'll make a notation of it as well. You remind me. Okay, so are we good if we review in January that Brett can receive the status quo of 1510? Okay.
That was just based on what I've seen going forward.
I agree. I totally agree.
We'll come back to the guy. I would recommend that Danielle receive her step increase per year is up within less than a month and she's met all of her requirements. Look, I'll put it this way. She's met all the requirements we asked her to at the time of hire. She has some additional training to go through, but. Well, you're welcome. You're welcome to give her as many steps as you like. She's a grade 10 step 2. I want her to recommendation from council. Oh, I'm sorry. I was giving her guys' wage. You're right. Sorry. Correction, grade 9 step 2. Grade 9 step 2. Take a recommendation from council, status quo or an increase.
Danielle?
Yes, sir. No, just.
I would, I think she needs to vote instead.
Okay, so.
That's costly. It seems to be, from what I see.
Yeah, they're per same set. Are you good with that, Councilman Minton? Okay, so we have a recommendation for one step increase for the annual set. So I'm going to do Danielle's grade 9 step 2. We'll go to a grade 9 step 3, which would be 2189. Correct me if I'm wrong. Also, would you note these, Danielle? Do you have the official one from my signature letter? And public works director is at grade 10 step 2. He will go to a grade 10 step 3. That's a 2410. Would you also put the official resolution on there? Does council want to, for that one? Did you get it? Huh? Yeah, let me make sure everybody's in agreement with those numbers. Okay, so that'll complete the resolution 06201901. City clerk, 2189. Public works director, 2410. Maintenance worker Brett Pekas, 1510. Maintenance worker, seasonal, Nathan Lux, 1510. I would entertain a motion for that resolution, please. Moved by Trump. And seconded by Minton. Any other discussion on the wages for next year? Very good. I will beat that by roll call, please.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Counselor Minton?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
All right, let the record reflect, or reflect past with four plus one. And if you'll get that prepared formally, sign it down. Thank you so much. All right, very good. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to item 11E, which is a resolution for the FY19 budget transfers and possible motion. So this is the, also in your packet.
Um, this has been almost a week this week. I have some notes in here. This is for the FY19 budgeted transfers. There's a report that I pulled and you have a copy of it in your packet and it's showing the transfers in and the transfers out. They do not tie in our system and they should. So I have probably lost a lot of hair and am going more gray trying to figure out why and where these are supposed to go. So the resolution is showing what I know to be accurate. We have the general fund transfer to debt service for our Move Heart 2017 geo bond payment. We have a transfer from the road use fund to debt service for the Move Heart bond payment. The emergency fund transfer to the general fund for the tax levy of the emergency fund tax F being. We have the lost transfer to debt service for the bond payment. We have the transfer from the tip tax F being to the debt service tip payment for the 2011 geo bond payment. We have, excuse me, a $5,000 transfer from the water revenue fund to debt service for a portion of the 2017 Move Heart bond payment. And then there's a $5,000 transfer from water to water reserve. And I honestly have no idea what that's for or why this budget is in there, so.
Everything reconciled?
Um, I haven't, yeah, I just need to make some adjustments in the system because as you can see on the transfer in sheet, some of those aren't reflected in here.
I told her, go ahead and do this. This is what we actually know. She's got some items that she needs to run down and I told her that can happen at a later date. It doesn't necessarily need to happen right at this point.
I think I have it totaled out. I just have to adjust what's in the system because that $5,000 to the general fund or the 6206 from the emergency fund to general is not reflected in the transfers in, more is the $5,000 to the water reserve. So I think once I get those adjustments made, it should tie up. I just, I'm not 100% certain why they weren't in there.
You're good with the resolution as presented on? Okay, all right, very good. I'd ask for a motion to approve the resolution in 062019-02. Moved by Henderson. Seconded by Trump. It's noted on here, but I want this by roll call also, please.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Counselor Trump? Counselor Sean?
Let the record reflect the resolution. Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to the amended item that you wanted for the bond.
Yes, that is the resolution 06201903. It's very urgent and lengthy and they provided this language and it's just to change that trustee from Baker's Trust over to UMB. And that's to facilitate those geo bonds that we have.
Just buy out, change your.
Yeah.
Any questions about the change? Okay, then I'd ask for approval then on the, or a motion. We're on the resolution 062019-03. Moved by Sean. Seconded by Minton. Also by roll call, please.
Counselor Henderson? Counselor Sean? Counselor Trump? Counselor Henderson?
Okay, record reflected it also. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to item 11F, which is the permit renewals and possible motion.
So we have two permit renewals. They are both for the clinic, the TPA for Mike. One is for the tobacco permit, which you have in the packet. And then the other is for their liquor license.
Everything's in order on?
As far as the tobacco permit, I was reviewing these today to get ready for the meeting and it's my mistake for doing that earlier, but we need to get Mike Wieland to sign the actual permit. The grant signed it as the ones who are running the clinic, but the legal owner is Mike Wieland, so they have the original application and they're getting him to sign that.
He's just out of town. So do we want to table it or do we want to approve it pending the signature or what do you want? It's got to be done by the person July. But it could be put on the agenda with the hearings. That is going to be an official meeting Tuesday. Yeah, I talked with Mary today and she said they got to drive him where he's at with the signature by Tuesday.
And I apologize for not noticing that sooner. It's just the tobacco, the liquor license they do on the IOAP website and it's electronic, so.
We get a motion to approve the liquor license and we'll table the tobacco license. Motion by Trump to approve the liquor license. Seconded by Minton. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Close, no. Motion carries. Would you make a notation of that? Add it to the agenda for the meeting on the 18th, please. Put it at the top and, yeah, clear that off as quickly as possible and move on to those other items. All right, thank you. Okay, that closes up new business. We'll move on to number 12.
Oh, that's for the old business item E.
Okay, yeah, that sounded good. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to 12A. It's the Alliant franchise fee and possible motion.
This is just a continued consideration of the discussion from the last council meeting where we brought up a franchise fee option with Alliant Energy. I think we would want to continue the discussion at a later date. I'm not sure if we'll wait till all council members are present or if we had any other questions or information discussed.
This is from last month?
Last, yes, correct.
Is that the one I missed?
Yes.
Okay, you'll have to bring me up to speed or council can just make the decision.
Why don't you refresh everyone's memory? But it seemed like a reasonable thing we would have talked about last week.
Yes, so at a conference that I went to, there's a gentleman from Alliant who works with cities in regards to this franchise fee. I don't know the background of it, but we have the option of establishing a franchise fee on the Alliant Energy bills to the AlbertNet residents. It would be, it would replace the local option sales tax, 1% fee that we already have set on those bills. You can't do the local option and the franchise fee. The franchise fee can go up to 5% and it's in 1% increments. A lot of cities are taking advantage of this and there's a list that we were provided to show all different cities that are utilizing the franchise fee. And the gentleman from Alliant had given us an estimate that in a year's time, right now, we're receiving about $24 of the local option sales tax from the Alliant Energy bills that are generated in the city of AlbertNet. And if we decide to forego the local option sales tax of 1% and instead do a 1% franchise fee, we would, he estimated we would receive about $9,000 a year. So it's a definite increase in revenue that we would be able to utilize and we would be able to keep that in the city. The only caveat that I didn't mention is right now, the school district is tax exempt, so they do not pay the 1% local option sales tax. However, they would not be exempt from the franchise fee, so it would increase their annual Alliant expense by 1% or whatever percentage you decided to do if you went to this franchise fee.
So an increase to the citizens of AlbertNet?
It would not be if you did a 1%. And you could go up to 5%, that's the max. But if you did a 1%, it would just, it would change over basically from a local option sales tax to a franchise fee and there would be no.
What's the sunset on the current local option sales tax?
I think it's 2024.
2024. And this is perpetual? It never goes away? Or when the old local option sales tax goes away, we lose this option?
No, I think it's perpetual. I would have to look in the instructions on how it's settled. We have a franchise fee currently with Scholfer, the USA Communications, and there's a set deadline on that, on when it expires. So I'm not sure if it's similar to that. There's a process that has to follow public hearings. That information is provided and the gentleman from Alliant is willing to have a conference call with us during a council meeting or try to be here for a council meeting if we would like him to explain any more about how it works and answer any other questions.
What's the process for escalating it when you need to?
That, he said it should take more than nine days once you start the process and what he kind of anticipated. I don't know if there's a way to expedite that, but I didn't find out.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation? I think it makes sense to keep those funds in the city. Right now, 9,000 versus $24 a year is a benefit.
And it's basically zero extra cost to everyone except schools.
And schools, and we have an estimate there, too. Wasn't that 18? $1,000 a year it would cost a school because. Have we advised them of that? Do we know what the impact's going to be or are they going to? I haven't. I've waited to see your interest level, true interest level, you know, besides what.
I kind of did, but I couldn't explain it.
I kind of did, but I couldn't explain it.
I think we should have the guy from Alliant, Danny, come here, give feedback from Danny. Good explanation would be like that.
That's better. You had a good explanation last month, but I better understand it now, so I can have that conversation as well. Not that you should, just so I now have a better understanding of what it means.
Perhaps for a PR aspect, it would be good to have over here and have someone from Alliant talk about it. But it seems as the switch from the local option tax to the 1% is really not impacted. Right. Slightly to the school, but... Yeah. I don't think I'd be in favor of...
In a million-dollar budget.
Not that much.
Be reluctant to oppose it against the school, who's our good partner and largest employer, without having a dialogue with them at least.
Then I asked if there was any way to... And I don't know if that...
But it's a pleasure of the council. What do you want to do?
I think we need to go ahead and get over here next meeting.
Get the meeting set.
Get the meeting set up with both IEM and superintendent.
We'll schedule it after next meeting?
I think that'd be... That way then everybody understands.
July 1st.
That's the second. Did you take care of that, too? Very good, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to 12B, the Wellmark grant funds and possible motion. Do you still have that power?
Yes.
Is this what you drew up, scheduled?
Yeah, just as a reference, since it was a couple of months ago.
So I have a little font on this. I'm not against your trail idea, but the plans for the school are eliminating softball fields. I would actually like to see some sort of diamond. And I don't, I don't know where you have the fire station area, and if there's room for diamonds, but I would like to see, instead of building railroads, build some diamonds. Because we're losing two.
I don't have an issue with that. I think there is a sense of urgency on this funding.
I know.
Where if we shift gears too much, it's, I think we've passed, I think it's around 14 something or whatever.
Not that I wouldn't want to see a ball field. You're not going to touch, you're not going to touch a ball field for that. You're not going to actually allow it to anybody. I actually wrote down right here, ball fields, because I think as soon as we get this fire station stuff wrapped up, I think our next venture needs to be some city...
Cities, both of us. We're losing.
We're losing. We'll lose one of them for sure. And it's probably kind of we start thinking about...
I only need these at phase one when it shows it on its property.
The amenities that the city provides as a host of the school has provided, and it's not going to be able to do any more, so keep going to think about there. I definitely agree, but you're talking...
And I have no idea what it costs to build that.
I can tell you what it costs to build an official diamond. This wouldn't mean like that. We're talking in the $400,000, not $4,000, but to build a complex diamond, whatever we're talking.
Yeah, I'm not talking about, I'm talking practice diamonds.
I don't miss it, I hear you.
Just thought maybe we could knock some dirt down, couple of the line, maybe a back style. But let's get, that's the cost.
I can talk to Corey, too, because that's what we did in the north part of the school. And that combos when you build a diamond, you just go that, that ball field. I can see what that has to, what that costs.
Just want to touch it on its property. By two slides in.
Oh, two slides in.
Right there. Okay, so this was the first phase where we put the culvert work in and so on and so forth. I think that I'll approach here and show that to you. I think the biggest concern in talking to the property owner here is that the sidewalk comes across here, but then it cuts in and goes across. In this particular project with Wellness, we had talked to them initially about doing something with a temporary ice rink that we put up and down. And the feasibility of that, because of location and current projects that are going on in the city, has quickly become something that we're not going to be able to do in the timeline of the Wellness grant. And going back and talking to them, by doing a walking trail on this particular side of the city that also goes up into the fire station, we hope to have a small memorial out in the front that goes onto that. And then we will continue multi-phases later on with this open property that's to the west. We haven't had a full determination as to what that's going to look like, but there's been a lot of different talk as to how we're going to develop that, whether it's going to be a park or recreation or whatever we're going to do. I know that that's come up a lot. Councilman Minton has talked about development of that area and what it's going to look like. By making this a walking trail, it meets the requirements of that. We'll probably have to put up some signings to recognize the Wellmark portion of it, but that's no big issue. Again, in talking to the property owner, I'm going to say it that way, because I assume you're going to abstain if we do take any action here this evening. The biggest issue is the breakaway here on the sidewalk, that if you look right to the right edge of where the sidewalk is, that's basically where you're going to see these telephone poles. Anything to the right of those is pretty much your guard, you know? Anything to the left is kind of on the right of way of the city. So there doesn't seem to be much of an issue as long as we're staying there. And talking to a guy who'll be able to do that within the project. The biggest issue is the culvert work that we'd have to do to get past this property area right here. We wouldn't move beyond this point at this time. We're only talking about getting from the street to here, and then work in conjunction with the fire project to extend it, extend beyond there. Keep in mind, there's going to be driveways here and stuff for those folks that have been active in the fire project. So this would be dirt work and putting in the culvert system from here to here. Since it would probably, no probably, it would go over the funds that are available, 14.
Around 40,000.
Yeah, just over 14,000. Then we would put in this initial work ourselves as the city entity. That would be like, there's three portions of it. The city would do that portion of it, and then the grant portion would pay for the surfacing portion of it, and then the homeowner would take the portion to the right of that up to the property line as far as any grass or grooming or sod or anything like that. So it's kind of a three-way partnership to be able to do it, meet the requirements of that. There is a sense of urgency on this. We need to get it approved right away. And by approval, I mean we need to, as a city, have put a motion to say we're going to switch our initial intent with Wellmark from the project of a temporary ice rink to a walking trail in this location. So that's what I'm hoping to get done and develop that. Did I miss anything?
No.
So rough timeline if we get this approved this evening?
How? We could start on that in a couple of weeks, probably.
With the sidewalk?
Well, not necessarily for the sidewalk. We've got to fill that ditch.
What's he anticipate?
Eight foot, same as what goes out to the complex out here.
Any idea on the cost of the concrete?
I have.
Put this 14,000 for?
I don't know where Dan Sherman's at. He's usually our best friend. I haven't been able to touch base with him. I've been trying since last meeting, and I just don't know. It was like 450 a square foot when we were at, on Rose, or on Moot Hart, when we were talking sidewalk with people. So I just don't know. I know Dan will come in as good or better than anybody else, you know, else will, so. 120, what, you got 120-foot deep lot?
110, maybe?
110.
110, I can't, or it's 110 by 120, I can't.
Yeah.
Say 110.
Any idea on culverts and stuff, what size we're going to need?
Yeah, you shouldn't need any more than what's going underneath Longworth. There's no reason to put any bigger. And I think it's just 12-inch, 20-foot sticks of double wall plastic, 12-inch, it's only like 175 ounces.
Since 12, why is it 18, 16?
Can't, it won't go under longer. There's no reason to put anything bigger than 12, because you got to get it under Longworth, and that's all that's going under Longworth.
Where will that ditch, that fill stop in property owners?
Yeah, probably put a surface inlet in somehow, some way. It'd be where Josh's lot ends, because that's...
There's a drive there now with existing...
When we do the groundwork for the fire station, the water that comes from the north is all going to be sent west. So the only thing we're going to be, the only water we're moving is basically what's coming off of Josh's yard, you know? Which is the way it should be, you know?
So just a quick calculation of 110 feet, five inches thick, four foot wide, because we're paying for that, that's only 7 yards.
No. Well, the grant, the grant would pay for the entire eight foot across there, because it's in the city right of way, until that money is expended. The grant would pay for all the, and it, once we run out of cement or funding for the cement, then we're done, because they're paying for a trail. That's what the money is intended for. If we can't get across his entire property, then we'll look at other funding options. Are you telling me we can't get the 110 feet?
6.8, 7 yards is over 700 bucks.
So what's the work backwards? So if you got 14,000, just figure the entire sidewalk, how many millio feet can you come up with? Just the concrete and labor gear installed?
Even if you said you needed 15 yards of concrete, you're probably looking at 16 or 1700 bucks by the time they, it gets delivered and...
Price to labor.
Yeah, so 3,500. He pays for everything from the sidewalk up as far as grass or sod or anything else. Want to utilize all the funds from the Wellmark grant, which is the walking trail itself.
Okay. My only concern with that is, we had all these people put that sidewalk in a couple of years ago, and they had to look and know for that.
I understand that, but we have to utilize the funds from all the grant.
Maybe we can push the trail further. But I get that's going to be driveway.
We can't right now until the rest of the project or whatever, and we have to meet the requirements of the grant immediately. I guess I want closure on the grant so we can be done with it, signed off, which should have been done by now.
You should have been at 110 feet, you're not going to spend that grant.
Yeah, no.
No way.
Well, then we can utilize whatever we need.
Can't the grant be utilized to prep that, or?
It could, it could. You could use it for the underneath work as well. Or we could at least get the first portion of it, maybe that meets the requirements enough to say, hey, we're going to work in conjunction to bring it the rest of the way.
That might be enough to...
Out there, at least that buys us enough more time to do it.
We should check with them and see if that's doable, let them know our timeframe.
All I'm seeking tonight is a motion to change the project, because there's a sitting motion out there from over a year ago, maybe even longer now, a year and a half, whatever it is, to change the project from the temporary ice rink to this trail. Once we do that, then we'll work out the details for the cost. I don't think it's realistic that we're going to ever be able to, where are we going to put the ice rink in the temporary? How are we going to fund it? We weren't funded enough from the grant to be able to do it. It's either that or go back and tell them that we were backing out of the deal when we're already at the end of the deal now.
24. I'm with you. Let's maybe try to make them happy, and show them we're making some progress. And maybe we should show them the site plan and paper, and eventually just trail around their fire station.
Yeah, you can hit the other phases there if you want to see what it looks like in its final.
Yeah, maybe we can send that to them, tell them we can't, can't do this yet. We got to experience it.
Yeah, clearly, we have a lot of money invested in the final product. We just want to utilize their funding and make the requirement first.
I had contacted them, and they understood, you know, we have this new project with the fire station coming up. So they were open to changing the purpose of the grant funding, but we just have to let them know, and then kind of put together some sort of timeline.
So you're seeking a motion to just change the grant?
Correct.
I think a motion that we let Wellmark know that we're going to change our plan for the grant money. We're going to change it from the temporary ice rink to the sidewalk trail project.
Motion. Motion by Minton, second by Trump. Any other discussion? All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Both no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Would you just officially proceed?
What's your turn?
Huh? What's that?
I didn't say anything, but I need to officially proceed.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
I didn't say anything, but I need to officially proceed.
Yeah, go ahead, abstain. I'm sorry. Would you let the record reflect that the property owner and councilperson abstained on that vote? I'm sorry, I moved. And you still have your form for that vote. Yeah, I used to use paint. I don't have all that fancy stuff. But I just want a visual representation. All right, I'll try to move along here. I know we've had a long meeting. 12C, it's the city logo and possible motion. This is also an item that I would just say we can take action on tonight, but we are one councilperson short in being something that affects our entire city. I'm not sure a motion is in order, but let's go ahead and get an update here.
There is one, my daughter is in design school at Iowa State, so I asked her to just start working on some things. This is one of her early attempts. The water tower in the back around, I thought was kind of unique. It utilizes our current slogan. She has come up with many, whoops, many designs here. This is probably the latest. Also, the Albertan may not relate to being a farm community, but that's basically just some corn plants behind the name, but we are surrounded by farm ground. So she thought that was appropriate to the city.
You know, I had my favorite before. I kind of liked that one, but maybe with the water tower, too. But anyway, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm starting, I'm starting.
And she can do anything. I mean, if you see pieces that you like and you want to blend them together, that's absolutely no problem.
I like the font, but I like the idea of the water tower.
Kind of on the right. You know, I liked my other one up until I saw that one.
I mean, I think this one is just, no. Yeah, why? Yeah. There was a, one where the gray lettering was brown instead of, oh, and this was another one that she just, oh crap, that one doesn't work on this computer, because she did it on an Apple, I'm sorry. And that one was just without the slogan, but there's been no mention of changing the slogan, so I would assume we want to, want to keep that in the ad, or in the logo. I'm going to go back. You like the more square font, Brian? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. I think you had that here. Oh, maybe not. I have that pulled out somewhere. Over here. There are some of her early attempts that was just kind of a skyline of buildings behind, and then it evolved into having the water tower in the back. I actually don't have the one that you changed the font on in her original script. Anyway, the first one, very first one I showed you that had the water tower in the back, that had the more cursive script in it, it was basically this font in that logo. I can't believe I can't find that right now. That's awful. Like I said, I can ask her to do anything. Yeah, there was one more that she just did. Oh, yeah.
It looks like a city in the background a bit.
Yeah, exactly.
What's that one that, that corner back on the head, the larger egg, and you like that?
Yeah, I guess that one is brown, isn't it, Steve? Is that brown?
Yeah, it's black.
Yeah, right, brown and black on the...
It looks black, too.
Yeah, it's brown, I can't tell.
Yeah, you can't even see the name.
But the other one you showed, it's all black.
Yeah. So... Yeah, that one was smaller. So, um, yeah, that one was smaller A, so the first one was a larger A. And that one's black.
I like the bigger A.
Me too. I just honestly, I'm looking at this and I just think it's synonymous with, and the block A is pretty synonymous.
All that with the.
What do you think, what do you think, kind of where the N comes up there with the water tower there though?
Oh, leave the corner in with the water tower?
What do you think about that?
It's not a good idea.
Incorporate it behind the wall, honestly.
Yeah.
It doesn't look wonderful picture.
Right, right.
Kind of make it more upper edge, water and corn.
And that is, that is very similar, the hay is very similar to our, like, the school's block eight logo, so I like that. I don't think it needs to be purple or anything like that, but I, I like others' symmetry between the two.
Maybe above the U have a picture of Chester, kind of like Chester.
I like that.
That would be good business.
And don't be afraid to say you don't like any of them and, and don't even want to do.
Okay, I didn't like the one that was the block city kind of, but I think, I thought that was.
She can sit here and whip logos on.
Let her know that I didn't like that one.
She's not all.
I don't want to be upset when you say that. I do like the.
You didn't like it either, did you? Josh said it was ugly as a mudfin.
No, I, I, I'd tell us that.
Oh, okay. Just making sure we have that on the record.
I didn't like the, the color that everybody said looked brown to me, it looked rusted red.
Yeah.
I liked it. That's all I got for you.
That's this one?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, so.
I'll see if she can incorporate the water tower in there somewhere.
Kind of shift it onto this one for now. Keep them all on there though, so.
Yeah, I'm going to try and get a better grouping together of, get rid of the junk and put the probables all together.
Does everybody really dislike it back now?
I do.
Do you?
I don't know.
It, it, uh, it looks kind of, uh, it looks, uh, I don't know. You like that?
Well, that was a contest, two years ago, and the lady designed that.
I don't know, it just looks like, it looks like it kind of needs updated, don't you think?
Well, are we going to go ahead and change all our letter ads?
Yep.
Yeah.
We're going to have to. Change the code.
Yeah.
Code sign on the trucks.
Well, I mean, if, if we go like what we talked about though, I mean, our policy manuals get changed starting July one, we start updating that and we, next year we start with our, um, codes and then the final, if we do what, hopefully the money get done. And then the next year we do, um, our entire code, city ordinances. So I mean, it might be a good time, we're going to do this, to do it now, so. Okay, so we'll get an update on that, get it next month and hopefully we have the full council present. Okay. Twelve D update, nailer sewer extension, rolls of coal.
Just don't move it. Uh, the weather was so crappy for so long that now the crop is in, um, south of the culvert replacement, so I'm sure, uh, I haven't talked to him recently, but I'm sure Garry may have come in midsummer and do the culvert and then worry about the drainage way later. We're still waiting to get the easement back from Rex anyway on being in the field. There's four property owners there, so it's becoming difficult. Um, and then, um, uh, the sanitary sewer, I'm sure he'll do them both while he's in town, so. I don't think the diamond club's ready to build a, a restroom anytime soon, right now. Anyway, probably be a fall project for them at best, but.
Busy about every night up there.
I was going to say, they're, they're.
Oh, I know they need it, but they, there's no way that they have enough money to finish the project.
I would say, to put the culvert mess sewer in now, it's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They have to every night.
You couldn't do it until mid-July, like.
Yeah.
Let's try everything like.
Yeah. Yeah, I never even thought about that, yeah.
Although, a lot of concessions to have money coming in these days.
Yeah, so maybe they will have enough to build their, their restrooms. Yeah, there, there's just nothing to wait on that one.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our last item, twelve E. Uh, this is a, uh, item that I asked to be, um, added and asked for a motion on this if you deem it, uh, suitable, but I'll go ahead and explain it. Our, uh, under accounts, uh, three oh two zero zero one 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 zero, which is the fire comm center budgetary item, which is what we utilize for the fire station product. I read the balance correctly, we have a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty and seventy-nine cents after we have expended our current funds out of that. Does that sound correctly?
Yes.
Does that sound correct? All right, very good. We have additional funds that will be expended over the, the next fiscal year. We're currently at FY nineteen, which if you look at the resolution in your packet, zero six twenty nineteen zero four, that is a request for transfer from the city reserves, a hundred thousand dollars into the fire community, uh, fire community center project. In the next fiscal year, we would have the option of, uh, transferring additional funds or looking at bonding options that needs to be as well as our, uh, fundraising efforts and funding that is being transferred from the fire department from existing fundraising efforts. My concern with not transferring, um, funds right now from FY nineteen is that we're going to get into FY twenty and then, uh, bidding up the project, well, besides the current, uh, expenditures that we're going to number from the architectural fees and the engineering fees and things like that, and legal and things like that associated with it, they're all going to come out of this existing fund. Um, and some of those fees are going to be, uh, seventy-five thousand as an example, that they're going to hit piece by piece. Um, example tonight, MSA fifty-eight eighty, uh, as they're just beginning to bill us for our architectural fees, but that contract is all going to come out of there over the next fiscal year. Uh, additionally, once they make that bid, uh, we've estimated that the fire station is going to come in, um, somewhere between six, six hundred and fifty thousand, depending on the breaks and the price of, uh, materials and things like that, which is also an unknown factor. So with the funds that we have in the, uh, current balance, it's going to be dependent upon some, um, uh, the city to be able to come up with that funding. Obviously, we're looking at the fire department to assist us fairly with their fundraising efforts. I know they've done a good job up to this point. Uh, we're hoping that, uh, that that progress continues, but we have to also be, um, fiscally ready to be able to, uh, support those costs. We see that the, uh, the fire station here is presented at where we're at currently with the, uh, architectural designs. If you're on the fire station, uh, committee, which several people in this room are, you know, that's where we're setting right now in our conversations with the architect. So I think it would be a good idea to go ahead and transfer a hundred thousand out of city reserves into the fire, uh, communications center project for FY nineteen and then we'll revisit, uh, any more transfers in FY twenty, uh, of, uh, funding into that, uh, particular project. Uh, that could be a combination of city funds, uh, bonding and fundraising as well as additional revenues, which we can't depend on right now up to and including what we're going to do with the old fire station and, um, property. So that's where we set. I would like to hear from each council person and if they have any comment on that, especially, uh, Councilman Shawn, some what he thinks about that as far as the budget, so.
Well, I think it's probably, the real problem is when Matt was the bonding attorney this past week and the, uh, county legislature, and before we can really do anything, we have to have a solid number that we got bonded before we can do anything at all. Now, we could, as we can supply them with a number, then they can set up a schedule.
Sure.
For us to go in and, and they give us, we've already got two options. We can have what's called a construction bond or a bridge bond, the weekend bond, and after a two-year period, then we have to go ahead and issue normal bonds to pay that off. And depending upon how much we, if we have what is left or whatever, after a five-year period, we can use that to pay off what have existing. And there's also some thought about being an urban renewal era, in which we may be able to do bonding more than a four hundred thousand.
Yeah, if need be.
If need, but that money then will have to be spent in the urban renewal area, so we need to be real careful. I think the key of the whole thing is to get an accurate number as we can, that we have to.
The architect's estimate is all, we can't wait till we bid it, you know, we just need that architect's estimate. Sure. Well, and keep in mind too, for the folks that follow us online or at the meetings, uh, several months ago, when we committed to the, uh, contract and signed it for the, for, uh, the construction of the new facility, um, the township also committed to, um, a hundred thousand into the project, fifty thousand upfront and fifty thousand at the end. Uh, we've since contacted them for the initial fifty thousand, but they won't, um, transfer the fifty thousand until actual construction begins of the, uh, fire station, which puts more of a responsibility on the city to also have funding available, uh, for this initial portion of it. So, um, we need to make sure that we have that, that funding setting there initially.
I would think as quick as we get the estimate from the architect of what the cost is, and we start the bonding process, we could put heat on them to give us money. At least I think it's what we're trying to, I think we should try.
Well, I want to make sure that, um, that we are properly funded throughout the, uh, entire project and I think by transferring this funding over there, it makes sure that we're at least good up and through the initial bidding process. And like you said, once we know what those costs are, then we'll be able to determine what we, uh, need to bond for, if we're going to be able to do that. I would like to, uh, avoid bonding for, or, or want to bond for as little as possible. I'm hoping that the, uh, that, uh, the fundraising goes well and our other, uh, revenue possibilities, whether it's the old fire station or the township comes through with, uh, as much funding as possible, so.
Well, I think another thing that's working against us right now is the school leaders to advise. Is there going to be going through their vote thing right now? And I don't know how receptive they are going to be if we go out with, add it, then raise taxes.
Yeah, I want to avoid that at all possible cost.
I mean, that's.
So, and I, I think that we can possibly do that, but we'll, we'll see how things go, so. Uh, Councilman Menson, any comments on this?
No. I don't, I guess what you're saying makes sense to me, that we have the money in reserves, we need it for the process.
Yeah, in the, at the end of the day, it's a city-owned facility and the, and city limits and we have to bid it, so. Uh, Councilman Trump. Okay, uh, Councilman Menson. All right, and, uh, hearing no opposition, uh, seek a motion to approve Resolution zero six twenty nineteen zero four for the transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from city reserves into the fire station project.
So.
Moved by Shawn, second by Trump. I'll leave that by roll call, please.
Senator Menson?
Aye.
Councilor Shawn?
Aye.
Councilor Trump?
Aye.
Record reflect that the forum was met and the resolution passed and this came minus the council search, because it's absent. All right, uh, that completes the, um, the council or the agenda as presented. I'll move on to aisle number thirteen, which is a motion to adjourn unless there's any other, there is one more question.
Do you have the schematic of the interior of the fire station and the lock? Should we have people council?
Yeah.
Just show everybody it's up to speed.
Looks like it, because it has the mess.
Yeah. Radio room, chief's office, EMS storage, training rooms, large storage for the training area, which in, three toilets basically, two accessible to the training room, one accessible only to the apparatus bay, a large laundry room with a little storage incorporated. This is the mezzanine that would be above this portion right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is two drive-through doors.
Drive-through doors.
Yeah.
Yep.
And parking would be off to the, this side, so there's a door directly in the middle of the training to access from the majority of the parking, I should say.
Do you have the lock outline that shows parking?
No, I don't miss.
You have one, one definitely.
I think I have it.
So everybody can see the oriental.
If anybody wants to see it, I have it in paper form here.
Yeah, it's the parking. Go grab it, go grab it.
We'll be on first and third Mondays, so can we grill off those things?
He's got a really nice backyard. You guys are welcome to use it at any time.
Perfect.
No bikini tire washing, is it okay?
No, it's probably not bikini though.
Thank you, thank you.
I think I have my car worn.
We're not adjourned yet, by the way.
No, we still have that.
All right, there's a motion to adjourn by Menson, second by Trump. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, both no. Motion carries, we are adjourned.